Good evening, everyone. It's about five minutes past six o'clock on Monday, January 7th. Welcome to our regular city council meeting. For those just listening online, those present and those that are going to watch us on TV. We just came out of closed session and Mr. Black, is there anything to report out of closed session?
Mr. Mayor, no final actions were taken in closed session.
Thank you very much. We'll call this meeting to order and can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Gastineau?
Here.
Councilmember Murray?
Here.
Councilmember Shalong?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Holly?
Here.
And Mayor Ania?
Here. I'd like to ask you to stand for the Pledge Allegiance led tonight by Mayor Pro Tem Holly. Ready, begin.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands for one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Under acknowledgements for this evening, we have none. Consent calendar, we have three items on the consent calendar. Is there any public comment on our consent calendar? If not on our consent calendar, I'll bring it back up to the council.
Moved to approve. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve our consent calendar. Would you please take a vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Gastineau?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Holly?
Yes.
And Mayor Ania?
Yes. Under reports and presentations, we have none tonight. Under communications, this is the public comment period time. Any member of the audience is invited to address the city council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note, however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on a non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be a part of the public record. After receiving recognition from the mayor, please state your name and whether you're a city or county resident for the record. And public comment is limited to three minutes. Is there any public comment this evening? Yes.
Connie Morrison, and I'm from the county. And last week, I presented you with some paperwork that I downloaded from John Chang, State Controller's Office, and it was about special districts. And it said that Delmar County had special districts and had not submitted the required information that they needed and has been noncompliant since 2009. And I didn't understand what special districts were. Not sure I do anymore, but I found one from 2007, '08. And the special districts here were the Birch Ocean View Community Service District, Big Rock Community Service District, Church Tree Community Service District, Crescent City Harbor District, Crescent Fire Protection District, Delmar County Library, Delmar Healthcare District, Delmar Solid Waste Management Authority, Fort Dick Fire Protection District, Gaske Community Services, Gaske Fire Protection, HRC Community Service District, Hunter Valley Community Service District, Clamath Fire Protection District Number Five, Pacific Shores Water District, Redwood Coast Transit Authority, Redwood Park Community Service District, Smith River Cemetery District, Smith River Community Service District, Smith River Fire Protection District, Tri-Agency Economic Development District. And then last and very concerning is the Trundle Insurance Fund, self-insurance, general purpose revenue is $12,758,555. And is there someplace people can find out about these? What was concerning to me was there was, I believe, 456 special districts in California that spend over $4 billion, and they're funded by grants and taxpayer money. And last week, if you remember, there's a woman up here upset because she has cancer and hasn't had hot water for three months, and we're wanting to start charging people for 911. And there's all these districts, and I was kind of being facetious that maybe we could check out these places and see if we can find some money there. And I think that might be a good idea. Thank you.
If I may, I sit on the Local Agency Formation Commission, otherwise known as LAPCO. And LAPCO actually, with the exception of the last, the Trundle, I don't know what that is. But the other ones are on a rotating basis. There's very lengthy reports that they give, and LAPCO approves the spheres of influence and takes a look at each of these districts on a regular basis. It could be that the information's not getting from the local organization to the state. So I will inquire about that. LAPCO, I think, meets this month on the 28th, I believe, on Monday, the 28th at four o'clock.
What really concerned me, because they have public members, and then I believe they had alternate public members also.
On LAPCO? I think there's.
Yeah. And the one I was reading was.
Connie, I think you're talking about something different than LAPCO.
Pardon?
You're talking about all the special districts in our community.
The LAPCO he was talking about?
It consists of two members of the Board of Supervisors, two persons from the city council, and one public member.
Was Dr. McLeedy?
No. Not any longer.
At one time it was, yes.
Yeah. And what concerned me was he'd been there for four years, and then there was somebody named Howard Block or something like that. It was alternative.
It continues to meet on a monthly basis.
And they became the same public member and alternate public member for another four years. So that was the concern, that are other people getting any chance to be involved with it?
Show up. We're redoing our bylaws right now, and you can take a look at that.
Thank you very much. Is there any other public comment? Seeing no other public comment, we'll move on to continuing business, public hearings, which we have none. Continuing business, we have none. Under new business, which is item number four, this is to authorize the city manager to sign a contract with our scene engineering to design a heating system using our wastewater water treatment effluent for the Fred Endert Pool, Community Swimming Pool, and the Cultural Center contingent upon the Department of Water Resources approving the change of project scope and extension of time. Mr. Palazzo?
Yeah, Mayor Ania and members of council, I'd like to have Public Works Director Weir present this item. Thank you.
Is that official?
Members of the council, thank you for your time this evening. I don't believe that's official quite yet.
We could probably make that happen real quick like Eric.
Yeah. Go ahead. So, yes, before you tonight, is a contract that we're asking the council to approve, the city manager to sign with Arc Sign Engineering. And this is, this is one of those projects that, if completed, and there's still a few hurdles that we'll need to go through, and we'll get into those hurdles here in a minute. But if completed, could be a great project for the community, for the wastewater treatment plant, and really it's just, it's a win-win-win project. The city years ago received some grant money through the Proposition 50 funds. We received about $935,000. At that time, it was designated that that money would go to a project that would irrigate Beachfront Park with the wastewater effluent from the treatment plant, and particularly the effluent that came from the MBR. As the city worked through this project, and it took several years to try to get through the permits with the Department of Public Health, with the Regional Water Quality Control Board, they went through many iterations trying to figure out exactly what the stipulations would be to use this water to irrigate in the park. Because really, the regional board treats this just like they would effluent from the treatment plant that gets discharged into the outfall, except now we want to use this water and irrigate the park with it. So there's lots of testing that goes onto it. There are certain times that you have to irrigate when nobody's at the park. They take into consideration, you know, the wind factors that we have here living right on the coast and making sure that the heads spray low enough and they won't spray onto public areas. There's the testing requirements are very extensive, that it will be ongoing for the city. And due to these requirements, it stipulated that the city would have to irrigate only at night when the flows of the treatment plant are very low. So this dictated that a very large tank would have to be installed in Beachfront Park in order to utilize this system. Once we put all those factors together and came up with an estimate, the project was no longer feasible. It was well over $1 million for the construction of it, plus the ongoing testing just made it so the grant money wouldn't pay for this project anymore. That being said, at the same time when all this analysis was going on, we were in communications with Frank Seating the Refrigeration for ways to reduce the cost of some of our general fund facilities, in particular the pool, which has a very high heating cost, and also the cultural center. We were talking to Frank about the different systems that were out there and some different possibilities, and one of the systems he brought up was a geothermal heat pump, which basically uses, uses water either from a well source or possibly even the city's municipal water, runs it through a heat pump, which is more efficient than your typical heat pumps to heat the pool with. Well, this comes with other, you know, issues of its own. When you're trying to use municipal water or a well system right in that particular area, it's not the best use of our, of our Smith River clean potable water. However, the wastewater treatment plant is just across the park, so to speak. So when we started talking about this project, we thought, boy, what if we could use the effluent from the treatment plant, use that water, run it through this geothermal heat pump, and then we'd be able to heat the pool, possibly the cultural center? We would then send that water back to the treatment plant where it came from. It would actually be colder, so it would be a water that's more, more consistent with the discharge waters that it then goes to. And so it's really, it turns into a win-win situation. The, the, the process it goes through is real similar to a heat front process. It's just, it's a reverse refrigeration process in which it takes that water, it actually, it takes the heat out of that water, reduces it by about 10 degrees, and then it runs that water through a heat exchanger and ends up creating water that's about 130 degrees. That water then goes through an additional heat exchanger, which would then heat the air, as well as would then be able to heat the pool water, not using that water in particular to heat the pool, but it would then run through, through a series of coils, and it would remain separated the entire time. The grant, like you said, is about $930,000 that we have now. The design contract that's in front of you is for $160,000. The mechanical processes are quite involved that this would take to do this, plus the design firm would also need to fully understand the existing heating systems that we currently have at the pool, as this system would work in conjunction with those systems, as well as then to evaluate the culture center. So that leaves about $775,000 left is what we're estimating for construction right now, and this is preliminary at this point, and we'll come back to the council with a more concrete number, but we're estimating that the culture center would cost about $200,000 and the pool would cost about $700,000 for construction. Needless to say, you add those together, that's over what we would have left. So that's where we would come back to the council at that time, and we would bid the project such that we'd be able to do one, hopefully, and then the other would be a bid alternate. So we'll have a better handle on that. So once we go through that process, we'd come back to the council, we'd run the numbers again at that point, having more, well, concrete analysis for the actual savings, and then the council will need to make a decision. We're expecting annual savings at the pool of somewhere between $30,000 and $40,000, and at the culture center somewhere between $5,000 and $10,000. So with that, I'd like to open it to the council for any questions.
Can you maybe get a little bit more about the spending of the money, the deadlines and the extensions that we've asked?
Time is of the essence for this project. Again, we've had, we've, we've worked through this project for a few years. The, currently, all grant funds need to be spent by March 31st of this year. So we have, we've talked to the state about this, and they are actually in the process of acquiring a time extension. They have given us all verbal indication that this is a very realistic possibility, and they're expecting this time extension, not only for Crescent City's project, but also just the Prop 50 funds, which were given to the whole North Coast. So they're hopefully expecting about a year extension on this at a minimum through October of 2013. Because of these time restraints, the contract that's before you is going to be a sole source design contract. This is within the parameters of our procurement processes, it's an engineering contract. This type of design is very specialized. There are not many design firms that do this. Arc Sign has, comes very, very well recommended to the city. I've checked the references, I've researched some of the projects they've done. They've done an excellent job. So that's where we've discussed this project in detail with them. They went ahead and put together a feasibility study, initial feasibility study, so we can get some of these preliminary numbers to you. And, and at this point, we'd like to move forward with our contract.
And we've already sent the letter requesting the extension of the date to the state.
Yes, we have, yes, we have, we have talked to them. They are aware of that, and, and they are working through, through a bigger process, not just for Crescent City's project, but all of the North Coast, which is what the Prop 50 monies were actually designated to, was, was the region. And then from there, they were delegated to individual projects at that point.
Does council have any?
Yeah, just to make it clear, and I talked to Jean about this, we are not going to spend any money until we get the approval that it's been extended.
That is correct. And, yes, so with this, there are two stipulations on the council's approval tonight. One, the time extension, and then secondly, the approval of the change of scope of work, because the initial project was approved as an irrigation project.
Thank you. Any other technical question?
Just, just for, for everyone's clarity, and I read it through, and it was, I got pretty clear as I read it through, but the, no wastewater goes into the pool. The wastewater simply heats the.
Pipes.
Correct. Those are, yes.
Okay.
Yes, that is completely.
So everyone feels comfortable with it?
They're completely separate systems.
Okay.
It's a, it's a closed-loop system, which will also make the permitting for this a lot easier, because that wastewater that leaves the treatment plant will not leave that pipe. It'll actually just go through the pipe, it runs through coils, which heats the water, and then it'll return back to the wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Holly, you're funny.
Did you have a question?
I do.
Oh.
Okay, so the engineering company, the sole source, we do not have to do an RFP. I'm just clarifying.
That is correct.
Okay. And then number two, so they're an engineering design firm. The $700,000 and the $200,000?
Yes.
They came up with those costs?
They, yes.
Do they also do the construction?
They do not do the construction, no.
So.
No, that is from their experience and our experience and some conversations I've had with some contractors on what this type of project might cost.
Okay.
But again, we'll come back to the council with a more.
We didn't reach out to a construction firm that might do it to get an estimate, to make sure we're not gonna, you know?
We, we have.
In three months, find out that it's going to cost us $2 million?
Yes, we have on a preliminary basis, but we don't have, you can't exactly bid it. You know, we've talked to them in general sense of this project and what it would take and some of the equipment costs, and we have a pretty good idea, and we feel comfortable with these numbers.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Ward. We'll open this up for public comment on this proposed project. Is there any public comment regarding this? Yes?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Please state your, please state your name.
Connie Morrison.
Look to me, I'll answer for you.
Okay. This is all to heat the pool and to heat the building?
Yes, it's using the water from the sewer treatment plant.
I got that part.
To, to heat the coils in the pool and then return to the plant and be dumped out to the sea. And this would save the city $40,000, $30,000 to $40,000 a year on the cost of the pool. It's a win-win situation.
How are you heating it now?
Pardon? We're heating it with propane. We're paying the heating bill.
We had our pool in the Bay Area, we took Houlish, and we put hexagon plastic around it, and it gives more sides, and we had solar stuff coming in.
Yeah, we can't do solar here because of the weather.
Well, I'm just, you know, this is off the top of my head, and, and that would be a lot less than $700,000, and it's going.
It's a grant.
I just don't want to see something like a wastewater treatment plant where month after month after month, there's more change orders and.
No, this is not.
Is, is this unit, Dick's, does somebody have it actually working?
Yes, and this is not public, this is not our general fund money, this is a grant from the state to energize, to help with our energy.
Money's money, you know.
It is.
It comes from people.
If it doesn't come to us, it goes to another city.
Yeah, right.
So this will help our citizens and reduce the, the cost to the city of paying for the heating. It'll work.
Oh, okay.
It heats, it heats the coils.
Right.
It's been, it'll work. Is there any other public comment? I think it's a great project, and anything to keep our pool costs down and to, to benefit our citizens, I think is a great project. Any other council comments?
I just wanted to say I'm excited, because I remember sitting around the roundtable discussing this project about two years ago, and it's very nice to see it actually come to fruition.
Hopefully. With that, I'll entertain a motion for.
I move to approve authorizing the city manager to sign a contract with Arc Sign Engineering to design a heating system using the wastewater treatment plan effluent for the Fred Endert Community Swimming Pool and Cultural Center contingent upon the Department of Water Resources approving the change of project scope and extension of time.
Second.
It's been moved on second. Clerk, would you please take the role?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Gastineau?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Holly?
Yes.
And Mayor Ania?
Yes, thank you. We're on to item number five, and this is to conduct a strategic planning work session and take action as necessary and appropriate. Mr. Palazzo?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Jean Palazzo, city manager. Time to celebrate. We have about a year under our belt with our 2012 strategic plan. We did an awesome process last year of getting to where we're at today. And tonight, what I'd like to do is update the city council on our accomplishments, on what we've accomplished last year, and, you know, some direction, you know, staff input direction on where we need to do, you know, move forward for 2013. And so, kind of, you know, it's a work session. Last year, we had this session, you know, at the wastewater treatment facility, you know, we had a lot of PowerPoint presentations, we had a consultant that, you know, came in and helped facilitate some of that meetings. We had several meetings with our mid-managers, our directors, to get to, you know, the process of the 2012 document. In that process, we accomplished establishing a, you know, city's vision, mission, values, and goals, which I think were, you know, a really large accomplishment. You know, with those goals, we created some objectives, and then with those objectives, we created some priorities on how to, you know, implement those objectives. You know, the strategic plan process is, you know, organizational, it develops a strategy to assist in its decision-making process and to allocate its resources in accordance with organizations' priorities. And that's really where and why we established the strategic plan, is to help us keep on track of our goals and priorities, and then take the strategic plan and the priorities and then line it with the budget. And as we have gone through a whole year and a half of process of, you know, declining resources, you know, fiscally strapped, we have a lot of need out there in our community in what we do, you know, with, you know, providing, you know, police, fire, roads, you know, protection services within our general fund, the parks, maintenance, our city facilities. You know, we looked at all, all of the components of our city in the last year. A lot of that, or all of that, was outlined in our strategic plan priorities through the budget process, through, you know, completing five-year plans. And, you know, I don't want to go through each priority, but we've accomplished a lot in this last year. This year, you know, we sat down with the mid-managers and the department heads, directors, and kind of talked about what we have accomplished and where do we need to go, you know, for this next year. And, you know, we had a real good discussion on what those priorities are. And the top priority, you know, that everybody agreed to was, you know, taking a look at our blight, you know, in the community, trying to put together some programs. And this last year, we've done, you know, quite a bit. We just recently purchased and removed the old burl shop property on the S-Curve on Highway 101. I mean, that, you know, has a very large impact for our community, our locals and visitors alike, and on the way we look, and, you know, our presentation. And going through, you know, our discussions, there's a lot of presentation that we would like to focus on in working with the different property owners, from just, you know, cleaning the weeds and the trash, you know, from their properties, you know, addressing some of, you know, the panhandling issues, you know, that, that keeps coming up. You know, the vacant buildings in our community, you know, we've had, you know, some, you know, things happen in our community, roofs caving in. You know, those things need to be addressed, and we need to start taking a look and being more proactive in addressing those blighting issues. So in this, next year's strategic plan, I think the number one goal and priority, you know, from the directors and all the departments, is to, you know, put some plans in place and do some focus on the economic development of removing the blight, because it is economic development. If we are going to have a healthy community, attract new businesses, expand businesses, you know, as the economy comes back, you know, we need to have that positive presentation. The second goal and priority that was discussed, you know, through these meetings, or this meeting we had, was everything we had on the table. And we have a lot on the table that we started. We've been very successful at the grant writing, thanks to Eric Taylor, who's written several grants, been, you know, Fire Hall retrofit, you know, RV Park grant, you know, we had a merchandising management performance grant that we, you know, just received, you know, and it kind of goes on, on, on the list, you know, the Beachfront Park Master Plan, you know, a lot of the, you know, if you look at our economic development issues, you know, those are truly, you know, economic builders of our community with, you know, continuing on with the Beachfront Park, continuing on, you know, trying to get funding for the Front Street project, you know, upgrading our city facilities. We have gone through an analysis in all of our city facilities, there's upgrades that need to happen with those. So in this year's, you know, strategic plan, it came out that we need to take those projects and priorities that we've already started and continue with those. And I've listed, you know, those on pages two and three of the staff report. We went on with the process, you know, the exercise of saying, well, what's the priorities of those priorities? That was very difficult for everybody to do. You know, we started, you know, throwing numbers up on the board, and it ended up that they're all priorities, and they all need to get done. They all have certain deadlines and dates that we need to be mindful of and try and accomplish. So what we will do is, you know, try and keep, you know, track and start, you know, meeting those deadlines and getting these projects done. So what we've done is, in your staff report, I, you know, gave you a 2012 strategic plan, kind of, you know, the accomplishments that we've had, what's ongoing, what's been completed, and then did a draft of a 2013 strategic plan. What, what's 2013 going to look like for us? And we've taken some of the priorities that we've accomplished, kind of consolidated that. We don't want to drop them, like our, you know, our streets plans, our pool facility plans, our vehicle replacement plan, you know, all those need to be looked at annually. Our revenue, we addressed our revenue fee schedule, we need to continue to look at that annually. So those didn't drop off of our strategic plan. You know, we'll address those through the budget process in, you know, April, May, and then implement, you know, with our, with our final budget for this next year. The.
Mr. Palazzo?
Yeah.
Real quick, you said to address those in April or May. Are we not having a February mid-year budget?
We're having a mid-year budget on next meeting, January 22nd is our target, to bring the mid-year budget to the city council.
Okay, great.
And then, you know, as we move into next year's budget, because we're already planning on next year's budget, as we get through mid-year, you know, we'll have to bring back to the city council our five-year plans, you know, for the general fund, the water fund, and the sewer fund. And what I'd like to do is adopt those. We, we basically gave the, the general fund five-year capital improvement plan, you know, discussed it. We didn't adopt that document. What I'd like to do is adopt it through the budget process this year. We'll do the same thing with the water and sewer funds as well. The fee schedule.
What does that do for us to actually adopt it?
Kind of, kind of puts it in place and gets us on that track of this is where we're heading for the next five years, you know.
That adoption would need to be tied to a budget approval, though, right?
It's basically part of the budget approval. It's part of the budget document, is your five-year capital improvement plans.
Okay. Thanks.
That's a good question. So, you know, what we've done is, is give you a copy of what, you know, next year, 2013 strategic plan will look like, and what I tried to do, you know, with this document is put in, you know, when certain projects need to be completed, you know, by what dates, and that would be our target. Again, it is a fluid plan. This document is very important, so we can move forward with this next year's budget and line our budget. our budget with the strategic plan. The resources, and I will be addressing some of these resources at mid-year budget, you know, because, you know, in accomplishing a lot of these priorities and goals does require some, you know, financial resources to get done, you know, such as, you know, project manager, you know, at mid-year budget. I'm going to, you know, come back to the council with some analysis of that, and what does that mean? We've had a lot of discussions with the county, and I think an August meeting with the council to bring back an analysis of a building inspector, and bring back that back at mid-year and talk about that. You know, so there's some fluid things that we need to take a look at, you know, what the costs are. And at the mid-year budget next meeting, I think we need to have a more thorough discussions of those areas and how we're going to continue to implement this plan and tie that in with our priorities. So, questions? Discussions? Ideas?
Could that project manager that we need be also a building inspector?
Yeah, that would be very difficult. I think they're two different skills for something like that.
Well, oftentimes, you'll find a building inspector that's an engineer. So, I was just thinking.
I, yeah, I, that would, I think would be very difficult. But we can look at that.
What if the building inspector was a general contractor?
That would be great.
And would that person be qualified to do some project management?
That would, some of our facilities in construction, you know, we have in here a city hall remodel, you know, to get more efficient, you know, with the city hall. That would certainly be, you know, a possibility. We have some other, you know, we have a fire hall retrofit, you know, that's going to involve a little bit more, you know, contract, you know, with contractors. So, that might be a fit. I would have to, you know, make sure that there's no conflicts with that.
I'm not sure they could inspect their own work, though.
Yeah.
You might have to hire out the actual inspection, because part of the inspection process is not just the letter of the code, but also kind of a check and balance process.
Right.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And so, there's conflict there. So, we'd have to make sure that we're not getting any conflicts.
I noticed that we, on our goal number one, we dropped the upgrade of the city's website, saying it was complete. And I'm wondering if the rest of the council might consider keeping that, because I was reading the December issue of Western City, and it talks, the main focus is on transparency. So, if we keep that on there and say that we, it should be ongoing in order to maintain the greatest level of transparency for the public, when any changes or projects, or if Fritz would be able to put those in in a timely fashion, or...
Yeah, and absolutely. That's the intent of the website, is keep it refreshing and updated.
Right, but we don't have it on the 2013 strategic plan.
We can keep it on there.
Okay.
I mean, that would be...
Sounds good, yes.
Because I, I think that that's really critical, that we keep the public informed on anything that we're doing.
We can make that objective number six.
Yeah, I, um...
Which it is on the 12th, 2012.
Actually, I'm glad you caught that, because I don't recall pulling that out of there.
To keep it ongoing.
Yeah, ongoing, thanks.
Where was it at in 2012?
Right here, number six.
Priority, goal one?
Under goal number one.
Goal three.
Goal number one, it's the number four priority.
Oh.
And it would follow with the rest of the goals as well.
Okay, I'm lost, because my goal number one, number four, is maintain a strong commitment to public safety.
That's for 2013. I'm looking at, we dropped it on the 2013, where we had it on 2012.
Let's go number three. Go ahead.
And under the 2012 strategic plan, goal one and priority three was upgrade the city's website, establish a social media presence. And we've completed that. And what I can do is maybe review and update annually the city's website.
As needed.
As needed, to make sure that it keeps refreshed.
Yeah, good, thanks. Oh, you're on priorities, not the objectives?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Any other comments? Did you have any, Councilman Holly?
Just a couple of quick ones. I was glad to see we're continuing to pursue grant funding resources based upon the last priority in goal number two. Is there a need, I wasn't here when the sports complex was being considered. Is that something that's still a viable project? I mean, should we mention the sports project?
Yeah, and I dropped that off of the 2013. You know, we weren't successful with the grant. We certainly have all the work that went into putting that grant, you know, together. We actually have some pretty awesome renderings of that project, you know, with staff. You know, we're aware of it. If we ever know of any other additional grant funding, you know, that's out there. It's something that we might want to pursue and kind of revive that.
Okay, that's what I was hoping.
And that is something, and there might be, you know, maybe some brownfield grants or something out there that we can go and maybe start piecing together, maybe just getting the property cleaned up, and then making it a little bit more viable. And that's part of, you know, the blight and the economics of it. I mean, and the economic development of this community, that is a very good viable project for our community. And so, no, we don't...
It seemed like it'd be on the fast track, since a lot of the legwork's already been done. It would be nice.
The legs were done, and we, I think, were, came very close to receiving that grant.
Did we?
It was very close. So, if that opportunity arises, we'll definitely be back before the council to pursue that.
Okay. We had a couple of visits from the state, and they walked around out there with us, and I think we could get it next time.
Good. I'm glad to hear that. The only other thing on goal number three, under the updating the technology improvement plan, I'm still excited about getting to some kind of a paperless meeting arrangement. I know that there's some costs involved in that, but ultimately, there's a significant savings in staff time and paper.
I was going to address that at mid-year as well.
Great.
So, we can, you know, bring that back and kind of look at the cost of doing that.
I also came up with a suggestion for the city, so it wouldn't cost them any money. For instance, we do the computer and rifle loan programs for employees that we do the, you know, if we're going to use iPads or whatever, that we do the same kind of a loan for city councilperson, because if you're, if we're actually going to use those so that the city can go paperless, we're, there's going to be, there's going to be wear and tear on those when you're using them for four years, you know, during your elected period. So, the city's not going to want a four-year-old iPad back, that probably the technology is outdated by the time we're done using it. So, if we paid for it ourselves through a loan program, I, you know, that would be an option.
Councilman Gastonow, do you have any comments? Does you have any more comments?
I just have one more.
Sure.
And that's on the 2013 strategic plan under goal three, under the objectives. If we could include the word in number one, provide a result-based organization which utilizes community involvement, innovation, transparency, and leadership. So, if we, if there's no objections to include the word transparency in there.
I don't have any objection.
I like that.
Thank you.
We'll add that.
Sorry, I didn't see until this weekend.
Thank you, Mr. Palazzo.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment on our 2013 strategic plan? It's actually a continuation from our 2012 with some minor changes. Public, have any comment on that?
I was talking to a worker this morning, I'm calling her, I'm talking to a worker at Safeway this morning. She said that they're going to be closing because Walmart's running them out of business. I don't know if you consider the residents in your plan, or using them, having, creating jobs for them in your future plans would be nice.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none?
And I can just add, great work to everyone that put so much effort into making this happen from the city staff side. Thank you all for all your hard work.
And this is a, this is a document in progress. And as Councilman Holly said, if we have an opportunity to go after the grant funding for the ballpark, we certainly will. I know Mr. Taylor keeps up on that. And there may, during the year, there may be something that becomes more of a, more of a priority than we have today. Something may come up. And so, that's why the strategic plan is good to have, and so, we can, it's almost like a roadmap to help us and to guide us. Okay, with that, we'll go to city council items. Are there any legislative matters?
Mayor, on, just on the strategic plan, what I'll do is I'll make those changes and just bring it back to the council and consent next meeting for adoption.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I don't see why we can't adopt it based on those changes.
We can, if you'd like.
That's fine.
Is that a motion?
Sure.
Is there a second to that motion to adopt it?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, passes five to zero. Thank you.
I'll make those changes and provide copies.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Shalhoub? Legislative matters, are there any?
I have no updates at this time.
Okay. City manager report to her council directives. Do you have any report? Council members have any council directives?
Council directives?
I'm sorry, not council.
Directives, no.
Go ahead. Next is reports, concerns, referrals, council travel or training reports. Anything to report?
Who do you want to start with?
We'll start with...
We all looked this way.
I know. We'll start with Mr. Gastonow.
Well, it was the holidays, so the meeting's not canceled, and enjoyed the good holidays with the family. That's about it.
Okay. Councilmember Shalhoub?
I think the only meeting that I've had in the past couple of weeks was with the chamber. And we have a new chamber president for the new year, and his name is John Manaw. Many of you are very familiar with John. And since he's retired, he's been doing a lot of volunteering for the community, and he sits on the chamber board, and now he's the new president. So, with that mentioned, I'll remind you that the chamber annual dinner is January 19th. So, I hope to see a lot of you there. And I just wanted to ask to continue discussions so that we can learn more about the updates or communication with the school district on school safety, and, you know, what their immediate goals are. I know that there was a little bit of a write-up in the newspaper, so that was good. I think that was good for the community. But there's still a lot of talk about it. And I know that my son's a teenager, and, you know, he and his friends are talking a lot about it, and I know a lot of other kids are, too. And just what their, what their plans on, are for safety, and also drills for the kids, not just the law enforcement people, but so that the kids know what to do if something like that were to happen here.
Yeah, and Mr. Olson and I, we've been actually trading phone calls.
Great.
And so, hopefully, we can connect here.
Yeah, I just wanted to keep it on your radar.
It is, thank you.
Right, thanks.
Did it?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Holly?
Thank you. I attended a senior center board meeting. We discussed the changing of meeting times and dates, which doesn't really make a lot of difference here. But we talked about the evaluation of home versus site meals. Apparently, more and more seniors are taking their meals at home, which is interesting. And it's getting more and more difficult. The infrastructure's starting to stretch to its limits. So, we're trying to decide what to do about that. We're reviewing job descriptions, and we did a mid-year budget changes at the last meeting. The other thing that I did was, it was my honor to go to the controlled burn down, past the S curve there on 101 at the Burl Shop. It was a cold, cold evening, and I was glad when, when the flames started to rise, it become, it became a little more comfortable. But it was, I think it was, it was a well-done exercise. I thought that firefighters seemed to get a lot of training, and it looks way, way better. And I appreciate everyone's efforts on that.
So much better.
Yes, city crews been spending a little bit of time out there cleaning up and grading the property, so it really looks good.
It looks great.
Yeah.
Is there any reason they can't do that over at the motel that we burned down?
Say that again.
The city crews going out and just kind of bulldozing it a little bit.
Which motel?
City Center.
Yeah, City Center.
We don't own...
It's private property.
That property is private property.
Well, then, can we send them a letter?
We actually, we've been trying to work through, you know, the property owner, and Mr. Taylor and I have talked about, you know, getting some letters out, so it's on the...
That'd be great. I get a lot of complaints about that. And they think that because the city burned it down, that it's our responsibility. And so, that'd be great.
Thanks. Councilmember Murray?
Yeah, we did, oh, I'm sorry.
Good, I'm sorry.
Just on that same point, we did clean it up once. But I have the good news to report that the bankruptcy court has authorized the group, the development group, to proceed with foreclosure on that property, because it was tied up in bankruptcy.
Oh, good, so there's a move.
So, that will be, that'll move forward. Ownership will change hands, and hopefully the new owners will take a more aggressive attitude to, thank you, clean it up.
That's great news. Yes, we received a letter. It was addressed to me because I had sent a letter of support as last year's mayor from the Wildlife Conservation Board, announcing that they have allocated $527,000 towards the development of a new restroom and fish cleaning station at the Crescent City Harbor.
All right.
So, that's exciting. And I attended the Border Coast Airport JPA meeting last week, and we have a certificate of appreciation for Mayor Ania for his time.
No, thank you.
And the primary focus of that meeting was discussion on mitigation with the Pacific Shores land acquisition in order to meet California Coastal Commission standards. So, we're working on that right now. And I wanted to see what we're doing with our planning commissioners recruitment. I see we have one potential one in the audience. And if we've sent out the, have we received any applications?
We have. We received two applicants, and we're going to sit down with the mayor later this week to discuss those appointments and bring that to the council on the 22nd.
Okay.
And I just wanted to wish everyone a happy new year.
Okay, thank you. Yes, it was a, the holiday, the two weeks, had no meetings. But I wanted to ask the city manager if he would do something, this may be coming up. Solid waste. I haven't heard if we're going back to a five-member committee, if we need to appoint people. Would you mind checking with, I guess, Kevin, and also with Jay, to see if we are going to, if they want us to go back to five, to appoint two members, or if the county does too? Or do you have any information on that?
We can report back.
Okay, thank you, because I haven't heard anything. And the other thing is, council, not council, but supervisor-elect Gitlin called me the other day. And in fact, there was an article about it in the paper on Saturday about the problems at the jetty for people going around the fence and walking on that jetty. And as the paper so accurately reported is that even though the jetty is in the city limits, we have no authority to cite anyone because it belongs to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. So, Mr. Gitlin is going to ask his board tomorrow, or very soon, to see if he can have a meeting with the Army Corps of Engineers, for someone to come up here from San Francisco, to meet with both the city and, to meet with the county and the city if we agree, to see if we can find some way to do something about that problem. Maybe it could be like other places have with the Army Corps, is a memorandum of understanding to cite and things like that. Mr. Palazzo, did you have a comment?
Yeah, just, you know, kind of give an update on that. Last week, Chief Black, myself, Chief Wakefield, sat down with Terry McNamara.
McNamara.
McNamara. Thank you.
You are.
Search and rescue coordinator, and, you know, bringing up some concerns, you know, on, you know, the levy, you know, who contacts the Army Corps, you know, to, you know, get some improvements. I think Terry's concern was some safety issues with his crews when they're out doing some rescues and doing some upgrades. And then also, you know, more of the signing and talking to the Army Corps, and just getting a contact, you know, with the Army Corps of Engineers. And he was going to, you know, kind of research that, we're all kind of seeing who our contact could be, and then, you know, make that communication with them. I'm not sure Mr. Gitlin's conversations and who he's been contacting. I'll try and coordinate, you know, with that to make sure that we're not crossing.
Good.
You know, doing duplication of work here. But we are addressing that issue, you know, through the emergency management component.
Very good. If that comes about, somebody from the...
Well, I thought in the newspaper, it said that, that they had a comment from the Corps of Engineers, and they just said that a letter of direction or request needed to come from the city or the county, addressed to the Army Corps of Engineers. And that letter would be moved up the chain of command to the person that would make that decision for us to have that understanding.
I think what Mr. Gitlin, when he was talking to me... I think with Mr. Gitlin, when he was talking to me, he made contact with somebody at the Corps in Corps of Engineers in San Francisco, and they, he wants them to come up here in February, it's one of the commanders, to do that, to do that thing, and he wants-
That doesn't make any sense, because why would you make somebody travel from San Francisco when they're saying, we do it in other communities, all we need is a letter of request from the body, the governing body?
I can't speak for Mr. Gitlin, but I think it's because he wants the person to actually see that, and to meet with our police chief and our fire chief and the appropriate people to say, we need to have something done about this.
Yeah, and I would, I would, I would ask, would you just write the letter?
Well, I'll follow up with the chiefs tomorrow, and we'll talk about it in our staff meeting, and we'll see what we can do.
Yeah, because it also involves search and rescue from the county, and that's why he wanted to get them all together.
And the lead agency is really our fire department with, if there is any rescues out there, to make sure that the safety, you know, is at most concerned for, on both sides, for the responders and, you know, the people that may be in danger.
I was going to tell you, too, there was an email today from the Solid Waste Management Authority that said that the next meeting is January 22nd, and that, and it was addressed to the supercommittee, so-
Oh, okay.
I would imagine that, that meeting will-
That answers that question.
-take place, and then decisions will be made there, I'm guessing.
Okay, Mr. Palazzo, I guess you don't have to do a follow-up. I haven't seen that email yet, okay. Is there anything else?
I just, just one more comment about, about the jetty. I understand we're going to have the emergency fee schedule coming back to us, and that might be in addition, depending upon the timing with the Army Corps of Engineers. I mean, we shouldn't, we shouldn't do it two times, one after another, so it seems like one of those costs that should be borne by the person that-
Good. We could talk about that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I- Did you say the meeting's going to be January 22nd?
I didn't say it was our meeting.
That, you know, January 22nd is our next city council meeting, so I'm sure, the Solid Waste one's at 2:30, isn't it?
3:30.
And ours will be at five, well, we have the room at five, so we'll have to check to make sure, because that's a Tuesday, because Monday, the 21st, is a holiday, so we're going to be here early that day. All right, if there's nothing further-
Mayor, if I might, just very briefly.
Yes.
I have hired a new attorney, her name is Autumn Luna, and Catherine had a chance to meet her at the airport authority, but I will be bringing forward a suggestion that you designate her as a deputy city attorney as well, along with Martha Rice.
So, you have an additional attorney?
Yes.
Get a bigger place and add a person.
That's right. Job creator.
Job creator, good.
Can we, before we were to do that, Mr. Black, could we see, well, could we meet her?
Of course.
And could we see a resume and-
Of course.
Before we-
Yes.
Put our, our dollars in her hands?
Yes. Naturally, I remain responsible for all work product of the office.
Yes.
Great.
Okay, well, thank you for coming tonight. Our next meeting is going to be on Tuesday, January 22nd at 6:00 PM. So, it's a Tuesday that night, because Monday's a holiday. Thank you for attending. Have a pleasant evening.